Okay, let's just read a little more for the sake of being caught up in our reading. So now, when we come to the end of chapter 5, and verses 10 and 11, we see that the writer is building up to the glorious high priest. And then, at that point that he's building up to it, thinking of the mission of the Lord Jesus, didn't end at Calvary. Something that was finished at Calvary. God smells a sweet savor. And on that basis, we've talked about the word propitiation. God's wrath satisfied. The execution of his justice satisfied. God is propitiated. He's appeased. He smells the sweet savor. So now, God can continue with us. He's not finished with us. The Lord Jesus is not finished until he brings us home to glory. And so now, this tremendous aspect of our Lord Jesus ministry on our behalf, so important to the Christian faith. And you know, again, back to shortcomings, and it's applicable to what comes in chapter 6. He'll say it in chapter 6. He'll say, "Here's what's happened to you Jewish believers. What's happened to you is you've neglected your Bible study. You've neglected your spiritual development in the Word of God, and in the knowledge of the Word of God." And that's a problem we all have, isn't it? How much of the Bible do you not know? I'm ashamed to tell you how much of the Bible I don't know. You know, it's amazing how much I don't know. It's not good. So imagine if all of a sudden the storm hits me, and the trial hits me, when what I need in order to have the faith to get me through that very trial is that very portion of God's revelation that's meant for my salvation. All God's word is meant for your salvation and mine. And I don't know that portion. That's a bad, bad place to be in, isn't it? When you, the storm has hit, and you need to know what God's provision is for you, and what you need to believe, and put your heart around, and mind around, and faith around at that moment to get you through that storm, and you're ignorant over it. That's what he's addressing in chapter 6. That's what he's saying to them. And he begins it here when he says in chapter 5, "Called of God, a high priest after the order of Melchizedek, of whom we have many things to say and hard to be uttered." It's hard to, in your suffering, in your anguish, in your trial, in your faith collapsing, it's hard, you know, when you're in that state to talk to you about this, because you are dull of hearing. You haven't trained yourself. You haven't developed, you see, your spiritual hearing and your spiritual knowledge to be instructed in this very point that you so desperately need to know at this moment to get you through this. For when for the time you ought to be teacher, you have need that one teach you again, which be the first principles of the oracles of God. That's an amazing thing, isn't it? That the first principles of the oracles of God concerning our salvation, and this brings us back to chapter 4, remember? Salvation wasn't, and the gospel wasn't a two-part thing. The gospel was all of one. And that gospel was not just that God would get you out, but that God would bring you in. And it is the actual high priestly ministry of the Lord Jesus Christ that is absolutely necessary to not fail in order for us to get in. Without it, you won't get in, and I won't get in. See? And in this area, back to again, I don't want to criticize. I am so thankful for those that helped me, and what God brought me through, and what I was taught, and so on, even though there's a lot of things that were taught me that later I found out, "That ain't quite right," you know. But yet, which one of us is a perfect teacher anyway, you know?
Amen.
See? But whatsoever things are lovely, whatsoever things are good, if there be any virtue, if there be any prayer, well, think on those things. And so, again, the Lord Jesus and his high priestly ministry, such an integral part of the gospel, without it, we can't be saved. And sometimes, we think of our Lord Jesus as, you know, like an honorary degree fellow. No longer goes to Harvard. He's not studying, but they give him an honorary degree. And so, the guy carries an honorary degree. Or someone who's, I mentioned this before, someone whose name, I think I did, is on some law firm, like Morgan &amp; Morgan. Is Morgan &amp; Morgan famous up here? Anyway, okay. Down in Florida, Morgan &amp; Morgan, Morgan &amp; Morgan, you know what I mean?
Do we cheat him and how?
Morgan &amp; Morgan. And you know, Morgan, well, his name's on the law firm, but he doesn't practice law anymore. And sometimes, you know, we talk about the high priest of the Lord Jesus, his office, you know, as if it's some, well, title. But he doesn't practice. No. His high priesthood, how much of it is real to you? How much of it is real to me? How much of it are we availing ourselves of? And so, here they were. And in this point, this is what they needed to know of the ministry ongoing of the Son of God, now glorified, that would bring them through and ultimately guarantee them coming in, in spite of everything that's happening, everything, the loss, the pain, the uncertainty. Why this? Why that? How can this be good for me? What, this is an absolute disaster. How can God love me? How can God be for me if he's allowed these things to happen to me? Satan loves to tell you that, you know? And so, the writer says to these people, "You've become such as have need of milk, and not of strong food that belongs to someone who has developed properly as they should." Oh, God help us. God help me. You know, in my old age, to not, to keep studying Scripture, to want to find out more truth from Scripture. And God help the young men in their youth, you know, well, to maintain a balance in life. I mean, you've got to prepare yourself to be a husband. And I say that generally. You've got to prepare yourself to provide, you know? Today, how can you go to a woman and say to a woman, "Will you be my wife? I'm a poor beggar. I ain't got nothing to give you, you know, but will you be my wife? Maybe you'll be my sugar mama," you know? It doesn't work that way, does it? You know? I mean, there's got to be balance in your life, doesn't it? And I'm just saying. Let's not lose sense of the common sense and the practicality of our faith. But we cannot neglect our spiritual growth, our spiritual development, and our understanding of God's ministry. Because things might go really hunky-dory for a while, but when the stuff hits the fanboy, then, all of a sudden, we can't put our faith around the truth of the Son of God that is the key to bringing us home to glory. So, "Everyone, verse 13, that uses milk is unskillful in the word of righteousness, for he is an infant. But strong food belongs to them that are full age, even those who by reason of use, exercise, learning to live by God's word." Back to the Lord Jesus and his temptation in the wilderness. It wasn't just, you know, something there that's like a wallflower. No. It's that the one who would be the captain of our salvation, before he entered into his ministry, he was first tested, wasn't he? And he was shown to be skillful in his use of reason, in discerning good and evil, in what is spiritually good and what is spiritually bogus, you see? And he responded, "I, I didn't need to come to earth to be the Son of God. To be the Son of God, I would have stayed in heaven. I came to earth to be the captain of the salvation of the sons of men. I came to be the son of man. And as the son of man, it is written, 'Man shall not live by bread alone, but by every word that proceeds from the mouth of God.'" And that will tie right into, again, the Gethsemane issue. And so, at this juncture, I want to bring in this issue of the link of chapter 4 and approaching the throne of grace. And again, we have to be careful what that means for us, but we also have to see what it meant to the Lord Jesus. And how the Lord Jesus at Gethsemane, when he was brought to, loud crying and tears, where did he resort to? He resorted to the throne of grace, didn't he? And his nearness to the Father, didn't he? And there, this is something that now, I want to be careful with, but the Lord help, and I hope it ties in. I want to go to 1 Corinthians, chapter 5. 1 Corinthians, chapter 5. In other words, back to examining ourselves, back to an understanding of what is the purpose of my redemption. What am I saved for? What were we saved for? And I would put that around the context of the Passover, and eating the Passover. And we remember what the words of the Lord Jesus were when he, on that night that he was betrayed, now ate the Passover with his disciples. Remember what he said? "With desire, I have desired to eat this Passover with you before I suffer." So now, the eating of the Passover in relationship to his sufferings, what's the connection, you see, between our redemption and what we're suffering now, since we've believed? And we remember the terminology here, that he made the captain of that salvation perfect through suffering. Why? Because suffering is part of redemption. The heresy of Roman Catholicism is that your suffering takes away your sin. And that's the whole purgatory heresy stuff. The only human suffering that ever takes away sin is the suffering of the Lord Jesus Christ. Our suffering is not for the curse. Our suffering is in bringing many sons to glory. They're all designed to mold us and train us and equip us for our arrival at glory. Thank God for the captain of our salvation again. And so, that link between the eating of the Passover, redemption, and suffering. And so, he says, "With desire, I have desired to eat this Passover with you before I suffer." What motivated that great desire to finally eat that Passover? Well, remember how he summed up his ministry. We read that in John 16. Let me tell you, "I came from the Father, and I'm in the world." Again, I'm in the world, and I go to the Father. Oh, how he longed to go to the Father. Oh, how he longed to be a glory. Do you? Do I? You see? And it drove him, didn't it? "I go," he said. "I go." How many times in his ministry in John's Gospel do we read, "I go, I go, I go, I go?" "With desire, I have desired to eat this Passover before I suffer." What is the link of that with then what happens at Gethsemane? And so, in chapter 5, we read this of 1 Corinthians, verse 6. "Your glorying is not good. Know ye not that a little leaven, leaveneth the whole lung? Purge out therefore the old leaven, that you may be a new lung, as ye are unleavened. For even Christ, our Passover, is sacrificed for us." What are the implications of that thing? We'll look at verse 8, "Therefore, let us keep the feast." Not just one day a year, like they used to. No, no, no. "Let us keep the feast." In other words, now let us celebrate the life that came forth from Passover, you see? The redemption. If any man be in Christ, he is a new creation. Therefore, let us keep the feast, not with old leaven, neither with the leaven of malice and wickedness, deception, envy, resentfulness, yeah, greed, self-interest, but with the unleavened of what? Sincerity and truth. Now, time doesn't allow us to go through. But when we look at Gethsemane, we find there the sincerity and truth with which the Lord Jesus ate the Passover. And there, over against his sincerity and truth, will we find Peter? And you know, when Peter ate the Passover, what did he say? "Though all men forsake you, yet will not I." And here was the living God incarnate in the person of the Lord Jesus saying to him, and here we have again the intercession. The intercession, sometimes we have to adjust our thinking, the intercession is not something that takes place after we screw up. That's not the way he functions as our great intercession. "Oh, thank God, he's the originator over all. Oh, thank God, he foresees it all. Oh, thank God, he knows it all." And so, his intercessions begin with him. Begin with him in the function and exercise of his high priestly work to bring you and me to glory in anticipating your weakness and your failures and your potential disastrous situations that are going to come upon you. And when you find yourself in that great agony and in that great struggle, under the circumstances that you can barely hang on, I tell you, if you're hanging on, it's because he already interceded for you.
Amen.
And that's how it was with Peter. Peter, let me tell you something, man. Satan has desired to have you, that he might sift you as weak, but I've already prayed for you that your faith fail not. And there was Peter. And as he heard the Lord Jesus tell him, "Listen, this is what's coming. This is what's coming," you see? Because your natural concepts, your natural reasonings are going to overwhelm you, and it exposed your utter inability to embrace my high priesthood, to embrace my messiahship, to embrace my need to suffer. And when you see me, the man of sorrows, you'll run from me. "But I have prayed for thee, that thy faith fail not." That will never happen to me. He ate the Passover. Well, he wasn't? Well, was he sincere? Well, he might have thought he was sincere, but he wasn't very realistic, was he? If it wasn't sincerity, it wasn't in truth. Oh, see the Lord Jesus, eat that Passover. And what the implications of that Passover, that man? And see how sincerely, and how truthfully, and realistically, he ate it. And so now, see him at Gethsemane. And you see him at Gethsemane, and under the weight of the whole thing that brought him to crying, loud crying and tears, at the throne of grades. "Father, if it be possible, let this cup pass from me. I don't want to drink it." Was he being sincere? Utterly. Was he being truthful? Utterly. Now, at this juncture, and again, Romans, chapter 8, is a tremendous chapter with regard to this whole process of development for glory, to be sons of God. And one of the things that you find in Romans, chapter 8, is where it goes and it says that even now, the Spirit of God that's given you makes intercession for you. I liked the Spirit. And that's an intercession that's made by the Holy Spirit inside you. And those intercessions are presented to us in Romans, chapter 8, in the context of your prayer life, in the context of what you say when you come to that throne of grace. And it tells us that even now, he intercedes for us with groanings and utterings and expressions that we, that can't be uttered. We don't know. But when he intercedes, he takes your prayers at that throne of grace. And he presents them to God according to the mind of God, according to what that mind of God knows you need to go through, and I need to go through in life for this bringing us to glory. And as you and I pray under these duress and under these times of great difficulty where we feel we're falling apart, we cry out to God, usually our prayer is, "Lord, take this away." And the Holy Spirit presents it to God in such a way that God interprets your prayer according to his mind. All the wonder of it, I tell you, it overwhelms me. What's the point? The point is the expression of the human personality, the development of the human personality, and how important it is for us to grow in our nearness with God, to grow in the fact that we've already been accepted in the Beloved One. We enter that throne, and we come to that throne, not in the way Abraham used to come to that throne. I want to be careful here. Not in the way David used to come to that throne. They used to pray, and they knew their prayers were heard by God. But what they, in a sense, never entered into, certainly not David under the law, was this awareness that God wanted them to have, that you personally, you, who you are, who I am, am accepted. I'm in living relationship with God in his most holy place. And I am to enter in and know myself fully accepted there by a God who gave his Son to bring me to glory, to be like his Son, so that I now in life can learn to talk and communicate and express myself to him in the sincerity and in the truth with which the Son himself expressed himself, even there at Gethsemane. The wonder of it is that God calls for our expression, and has given us the Spirit of God to intercede for us in the development of our expression. And this ties back into these miracles of the Lord Jesus, that the very climactic ones had to do with the death of the dumb. And all of a sudden, people that were deaf to God and the wonder of what God is really like, what is he like? Now would know what God is like, and it would promote an expression from the heart in living relationship of confidence and faith and love with that God who so loved him that he spared not his only son, but gave him up for us. That's, this is glorious stuff. And so, again, this is incredible, that come boldly to the throne of grace. This is the Spirit of God saying, "Come, come, come." I don't know about you, but with your children, how many times you find yourself, you know, how long till we get there? How many of you experience that? How long till we get there? Shut up, man! Not God. Not God. All the wonder of it. What faith in the living gods of Jesus Christ has done to the human personality? And now, the needed development of that human personality and the expression of that human personality in the deepest of trials and circumstances as we fight to express our confidence in him, our faith in him. "For he that cometh to God must believe that he is, and that he is a rewarder of them that diligently seek him. For without faith it is impossible to plead with him." Oh, God, help us. So we see the Lord Jesus here at Gethsemane, and we see the Lord Jesus here at Gethsemane, and he prayed, "Father, if it be possible, take this cup from me." Nevertheless, he had it. "Not my will, but thine be done." And in that sense, he's the author and finisher of our faith, isn't he? He encapsulates what it is to believe God and to believe according to the poison of Genesis 3, of thinking, there's a will, or that my will, or that what I think is best for me is actually better for me than what God's will is for me. I don't know if you've ever had the problem with it. I used to have the problem with it, especially when I was facing 40 years in prison. Not fun. Not fun, I tell you. And I ask people, "Pray for me, please. Pray that God won't let me go to prison." And you know, some super spiritual yahoo will say, "I'll pray God's will for you, Father." I want to punch him right in the face. You ever had that experience? Listen, man, pray that God keep me from prison. Can't you do that for me, man? No, I will pray God's will for you. You know, if somebody asks you to pray something, pray it. I mean, if it's not sin to pray it, pray it, you know? The Lord Jesus himself said, "Father, I don't want to drink this cup. Take it from me." Nevertheless, "Not my will, but thine be done." There was a problem with my wanting to punch the brother in the face. And part of the problem was that...
Give you another 20 years.
Yeah. Part of the problem was my lack of confidence in the will of God. Oh, God, help us from that. How poisonous is that? An evil heart of unbelief in departing from the living God, that the way that he's bringing us to glory is the way to get to glory. And it's the captain of our salvation that is bringing us through and will bring us through. So the Lord Jesus at Gethsemane prayed, was he sincere? Yes, he was. Was he truthful when he said, "Not, but not my will, but thine be done?" Yes, he was. When the answer came back, and the answer came back that it was not possible. I mean, not if you'd be saved, the right be saved. Not if he was going to be the captain of our salvation and our high priest who was able to succor us and bring us to the Lord. The Lord Jesus then did what? He drank the cup. How did he drink it? For the joy that was set before him. He endured the cross. He drank it without resentment. What are you like when your prayers aren't answered the way you want them to? I mean, I... He drank that cup without resentment, and he drank that cup without reserve to the last drop. He meant what he prayed, and he prayed what he meant. Oh, God, help us to learn to come to that throne boldly. Oh, God, help us to enter into the wonder of, "So near, so very near to God, nearer I cannot be, for in the person of his Son I am as dear as..." Now, I just want to go to Matthew 26 quickly, just for a moment there. And Matthew 26, and notice now what happens immediately after praying that prayer. Verse, Judas comes, and obviously betrays him with a kiss. Verse 59, "And Jesus said unto him, Friend, wherefore thou come? Then came they, and laid hands on Jesus, and took him." And now, here's the Peter. "And behold, one of them, which were with Jesus, stretched out his hand, and threw his sword, and struck a servant of the high priest, and smote of his ear. Then said Jesus unto him, 'Put up again thy sword into its place; for all they that take the sword shall perish with it.'" For all they that take the sword shall perish with the sword. Now watch this, verse fifty-three. Peter, thinkest thou that I cannot now pray to my father? And he would presently give me more than twelve legions of angels with swords to keep me from drinking this cup? You explain that to me. I don't understand it. But he could have done it. That's what he said to Peter. What are you thinking? You, 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 you think I couldn't pray, Father? My will be done? What do you think I am? Thinkest thou that I cannot now presently, at this moment? He was free. The Son of God was free. The Son of God wasn't a machine. The Son of God wasn't a robot. He meant what he prayed. And he prayed what he meant. Nevertheless, not my will, but thine be done. But if I prayed that prayer and did that prayer, verse fifty-four, how then shall the scriptures be fulfilled that thus it must be? Oh, blessed and living word of God that fulfilled the written word of God. Oh, thank God for the fulfillment. Oh, thank God for the obedience of the Son. Oh, thank God for the sons eating of the Passover and celebrating the eating of the Passover with sincerity and oh, God, help the likes of you and me to sow now, yes, keep the feast and keep the feast with sincerity and truth. The Lord's supper again. Let every man examine himself in sincerity and truth. And come boldly to the throne of grace for the needed mercy that we need and the needed grace that we need in order that we might go on believing all the way to glory. Blessed be the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I'm going to stop there and turn it over to Keith.
Very good, amen. Can you hear this thing on? Okay, it says it's on here, but doesn't sound like I'm coming through the speaker so well. Anyway. That's okay. Hello, hello? Nope. An enemy had done this. We'll switch.
Yeah, now that I've put on this mic, I want to take five minutes.
In actual fact, amen to what our brother has said. I just want to note a few things about the thought flow of Hebrews at this point in chapter five. That, uh, just a few basic things that we don't want to miss. These are obvious, but it bears repeating, I think. That basically he's brought in this notion in chapter two and chapter four of the Lord Jesus as our high priest. And as we've heard, the sufferings of Christ do not prohibit him from being the high priest. They actually authenticate him and credential him to be the high priest. And he's, we're going to find out more and more, especially when we get to chapter seven, all the different aspects of that high priestly work of Christ. But you can imagine a critic at this point, a Hebrew Jewish person, let's say, not a believer, saying, well, where do you Christians get off saying that Jesus is a high priest? I mean, he's not from the tribe of Levi. He's not of the sons of Aaron. So what right does he have to be a high priest? And of course, chapter five asks the question or makes the statement, I should say, in anticipation of that question, every high priest taken from among men is appointed for men in things pertaining to God, that he may offer both gifts and sacrifices for sins, verse one. Verse two, he can have compassion on those who are ignorant and going astray since he himself is also subject to weakness. Because of this, he's required as for the people so as for himself to offer sacrifices for sins. And no man takes this honor to himself, but he was called by God, just as Aaron was. Now remember, Aaron didn't say, hey, God, I think we need a high priest, pick me. God called Aaron. God is the one who said we needed a mediator. God is the one who knows. We need someone who goes into God on our behalf. He represents the people before God and who comes out from the presence of God. He wore that mitre, that turban hat that had the placard on the front, holiness unto the Lord. And he represents God unto the people. So on the one hand, he's upholding the holy standards of God and offering the gifts and sacrifices that are required to bring us to God. And also bringing our needs before God. He's going into God for us and coming out from God to also minister to us and to teach us. And nobody just decides, hey, I think when I get out of high school, I'm going to go the high priestly track. I'll go to the, you know, to the priestly technical school of Hoboken and I'll get my BA in priestly studies and I'll be a priest. No. You had to be called by God. Now, in the era or the dispensation of the law, there was only one priesthood. It was the Aaronic priesthood. But Hebrews is going to make the point that there's another priesthood that the law itself countenances. And when I say the law itself, I mean Torah, which originally meant, we often translate it law, but it meant instruction. And of course, the first five books of the Bible are known as Torah, are known as law, okay? So in those first five books, specifically in Genesis fourteen, we meet Melchizedek. More on him when we get to chapter seven especially. But the point that's being made here in chapter five is that this isn't just some arbitrary add-on that Christians have decided, oh yeah, we've got a high priest too. It's the Lord Jesus. No. The Lord Jesus is a legitimate high priest because just as God called Aaron to be a priest, the Lord Jesus has also been called to be a high priest, but not according to the order of Aaron. As much as the Aaronic priesthood may picture aspects of our Lord's work to us, the legitimacy of our Lord's priestly work, if I can say it that way, runs in this order of Melchizedek. He is a priest of the Melchizedek type or the Melchizedek style. Okay, a priest like Melchizedek was a priest who, chapter seven will point out to us that he was a king of righteousness and a king of peace. So this is a priest king, something that Aaron could never say. Under the Aaronic priesthood, priests and kings were kept very solidly apart. Just ask Uzziah, the king who tried to approach and worship God under the Aaronic system and was struck with leprosy for his temerity, for doing what was contrary to God's law. But in the Lord Jesus, priesthood and kingship as well as prophethood, those three anointed offices, because the Christ or Messiah means the anointed one. The Lord is the anointed priest, the anointed king, the anointed prophet. And he's going to come after the order of Melchizedek. So we're going to find out that order of Melchizedek is better than the Aaronic priesthood as we go along through Hebrews. But here he's just making the point that this wasn't even the Lord Jesus own putting himself forward, saying, I will be the priest. Verse five says, so also Christ did not glorify himself to become high priest. Amen. But it was he who said to him, you are my son today. I've begotten you. We know that from chapter one. He's quoting Psalm two. But also he says in another place, you are a priest forever according to the order of Melchizedek. That's Psalm one ten. By the way, outside of Hebrews, the only other two places in the Bible we get Melchizedek explicitly is Genesis fourteen, the historical account of his interaction with Abraham. And then Psalm one ten, which was centuries later, God saying, you're a priest forever after the order of Melchizedek. So even with the Aaronic priesthood being on earth already, God having given the Aaronic priesthood, Psalm one ten, he speaks about another priesthood. And Hebrews seven is going to explain to us the implications of that for the law and for the, chapter eight is specifically is going to get into the difference of covenant. Now, we've already heard about that priestly work that the Lord Jesus exercises. But I just want to note, if you read the first few verses of chapter five, it could sound like the Lord Jesus has to offer for his sins. But in the first few verses of chapter five, contextually, we're not talking about the Lord Jesus specifically. We're talking about the work of a priest generally. In other words, this is what a high priest does. So those high priests in the Aaronic system had compassion on those who are ignorant and going astray since he himself also is subject to weakness. In other words, they were people of like passions to us. They knew what it was like to be a man. They knew what it was like to struggle and fail. And what's more, they had to offer sacrifices for the people, but also for himself, he says in verse three, to offer sacrifices for sins. Now there's the distinction. The Lord Jesus had no sins for which he had to offer sacrifices. Okay? So don't think that's saying that the Lord Jesus had to offer for his own sins. We've already been told just a few verses before in chapter four, that he is without sin. That's why it's important. This is a basic, obvious point, I know, but it bears repeating. Context is king. And you read something in the Bible and you're like, oh, wait a minute, that doesn't sound quite right. Well, listen, go back and read a little before and a little after and it usually clarifies things. And that's why the cults pick a verse or even a phrase or even a word from here and there and they string together. And the next thing you know, you've got a concatenation of false doctrine. You know, this big chain of error they've linked together. Well, we don't want to do that. We want to read contextually. The point is here, this is what a priest does. He offers gifts and sacrifices. In the case of Aaron and his sons, they had to offer for themselves, for their own sins as well as for the people. Of course, the Lord Jesus offers, offered the one sacrifice for our sin and he never needed to offer for his own sins because he had none, as we said before. Now, having said that, he'd like to tell us more in chapter five about Melchizedek, but he has to table that for the time being. I don't feel badly because he's going to get back to him in chapter seven especially. But the reason he has to table it is verse twelve. For though by this time you ought to be teachers, you need someone to teach you again the first principles of the oracles of God. And again, we see what he's talking about here, that they haven't done the work they need to do, as Brother Henry was saying, in searching the scriptures and discerning. Not just having an acquaintance with the scriptures or even reading the scriptures, but we have to dig into the Word. I remember Boyd Nicholson Senior, now with the Lord a number of years, was a Scotsman, of course, and he talked about two coal miners he knew of in Scotland who were believers. And they would pass each other on their way to work in the mornings, uh, one going to one coal mine, another going to another. And the one brother would say to the other, as they passed on the road, brother, where art thou gleaning? And the other brother said Ephesians one. Next day, they passed each other, brother, where art thou gleaning? Next brother said Ephesians one. Third day, brother, where art thou gleaning? He said Ephesians one. Said, brother, these three days I've asked you where you're gleaning and you've said Ephesians one. He said, aye, brother, but I'm digging a shaft. You know, that's what we've got to do. We've got to dig down deep into the Word. Hebrews is going to use particular words at certain times, like in chapter two. Let's give the more earnest heed. Or in chapter twelve, consider him who endured such great contradiction with sinners. These are attention words. Pay attention. Think through the scripture. Not just, I read my chapter for the day. Now I can get on with the real important stuff of the day, you know, going to my job and whatever.
Add eight one to it, man.
Add eight one, yeah, amen. Eight one.
As far as putting emphasis on something.
Yeah, putting emphasis on something, okay. So eight one. Now this is the main point of the things we are saying, amen. If we have such a high priest who seated at the right end of the throne of the majesty in heavens, amen. So yes, so we got to pay attention. Now, at the beginning of chapter six, he says that they were going to leave these elementary things. He says, let us, this is another one of the let us statements in verse one, go on to perfection. And we know this is the thought of maturity. The thought of proper growth and coming to maturity. Not laying again the foundation of repentance from dead works, of faith toward God and the doctrine of baptisms, laying on of hands of resurrection of the dead and eternal judgment. And this we will do if God permits. So there are certain things like you wish right at that moment he'd explain more, but that's not what he's going to, uh, go into maybe in the way they wanted him to. But he decides to hit really what they need to hear at that point in time, which is another of the warning passages in verse four. And it's perhaps the most famous, arguably the most controversial and to my mind, the most scary of the warning passages of Hebrews. But you know, chapter ten might vie for that distinction as well. And verse four says, for it is impossible for those who were once enlightened and have tasted the heavenly gift and have become partakers of the Holy Spirit and have tasted the good word of God and the powers of the age to come, if they fall away, to renew them again to repentance since they crucify again for themselves the Son of God and put him to an open shame. For the earth which drinks in the rain that often comes upon it and bears herbs useful for those by human is cultivated, receives blessing from God. But if it bears thorns and briars, it is rejected and near to being cursed whose end is to be burned. Now, this is again in that handout in the Sheaf of Papers from our late brother Randy, one of those red lights. You've got to stop here. This is a great warning. Stop and consider here that it's possible to be enlightened, to have a taste of the things of God. To even have some kind of general share in the things of God and yet not go all the way to have salvation in Christ. And it's possible, being in that marginal state, to turn away from the Lord Jesus, to apostatize. And Second Thessalonians two talks about the great apostasy that's going to happen in our world, a falling away. Apostasy is literally a standing away. I once stood for something. I once stood for the true and living God. I once stood for the fact that Jesus is God, that he died on the cross for our sins and rose again for our justification, that God hath made him both Lord and Christ. But now I repudiate that. Now I stand away from that, the apostate says. Sadly, we've known people to do this personally. In the last week, I've interacted with a person who seems to be going this route personally. And it's something that I think we're going to see more and more uh, up until the Lord's coming. The Lord said in Matthew twenty-four, I believe it was, when the Son of Man comes, shall he find faith on the earth? And I know there are implications in the all of the discourse for the future tribulation. But already we're seeing that mystery of iniquity working. That spirit of lawlessness that doesn't want to submit to God, that turns away from the truth of God, that hardens itself against God's entreaties and appeals. Now, there's a few principles we got to remember, at least three, I would say, when we come to a passage like this. Number one, I just said it a few moments ago, context is king. So a lot of people come to these verses and they want to pull them out of the context of the book of Hebrews and say all kinds of things about them. We have to interpret it within the context of Hebrews. As I said yesterday, Brother McLeod in his correspondence course on Hebrews says that the warning passages ought to be taken together. And I think there's great value in studying them that way. But also I would say we have to take these passages in the context of scripture. So we know from the rest of scripture that it is impossible for a true believer in the Lord Jesus Christ to be lost. That someone who has been born again by faith in Christ cannot lose their salvation. John 10 tells us, the Father holds us in his hand, so does the Son. Ephesians one speaks about us sealed with the Holy Spirit of promise unto the day of redemption. We are eternally secure in Christ, as the hymn writer said, on Christ's salvation rest secure, the rock of ages must endure, right? So we know that's true from the context of scripture. Second principle, we don't interpret the clear by the obscure. So if there's a passage of scripture that's difficult, that's hard for us to understand in some of the language, or even that different brothers have had a lot of trouble coming to an agreement about, we don't interpret the other scriptures that are very clear, like the fact that we have eternal security in Christ, being periled by the obscure scripture. I hope I'm clear in what I'm saying there. So he's not teaching losing your salvation, whatever Hebrews six, four through eight is saying. It's not talking about a true believer losing his salvation. And the third principle is that we have to be careful not to read our experience into scripture when we're interpreting scripture. Our experience has to be interpreted in the light of scripture, not the other way around. And what I mean by this is, when we come to a passage like this, so many of us have friends and family members and maybe people that used to be in our own assemblies. And we could say, well, this person, you know, seems so joyful in the Lord, and they seem to be so active in Christian service, and they seem to be such a bright Christian. And yet today we look at their lives and they're so far away from God. And they say, well, certainly they must be a believer because they're just backsliding. And that's really what this passage is talking about. A lot of people I find from their experience want to interpret this passage that way. Now, given, we've said it over and over again in our studies so far, we can and do fall into sin. We constantly have need to resort to the throne of grace. We constantly need the work of the great high priest, whether we're conscious of it or not, whether we go to that throne or not, the high priest is working on our behalf. And if we could lose our salvation, we would, as Henry said yesterday. If we could do something to separate us from the love of God, we would. So in ourselves, we could say we have eternal insecurity. But in Christ, there's truly eternal security. Can a believer grow cold of heart? Can a believer fall into grievous sin? Can a believer be estranged from Christian fellowship? And from daily walking with the Lord? Certainly we can. In Hebrews 12, we'll talk about the chastening work of the Lord, which Henry has already referred to a couple of times, his discipline of his children. That if a true believer is backsliding, guess what? The Lord doesn't say, ah, they've got to go sow their wild oats. No, the Lord is going to work on them, and he's going to bring things into their lives and make it difficult for them so that they want to come back to the Father, so that they want to return to the things of God. Now, while it is true that the Bible contemplates our capacity to sin and fail and backslide, I don't believe that's what Hebrews six is talking about. Because the language here is much more strong. You notice he says, for it is impossible for those who were once enlightened. Now, is it possible to be enlightened and not be born again? Absolutely, it's possible. Because John, chapter one, tells us that the Lord Jesus is the light who lightens every man who comes into the world. The light shines in darkness, and the darkness comprehendeth it not, we are told. So there are people that can be enlightened, they receive the light of God. And even, we might say, the light bulb comes on for them, that there's a certain intellectual understanding of the gospel. They're not like people who've never heard the name of Jesus, or who don't have any concept of what atonement means, or propitiation, or sacrifice. They hear these concepts, and there's been some understanding of that. What's more, it says they've tasted the heavenly gift. Now, the word tasted is a little bit problematic. People rightly point out that the word in Hebrews two is used there, same word, to talk about the Lord Jesus tasting death for every man. And the Lord Jesus, of course, experienced death to its fullness. He not only experienced physical death, he experienced spiritual death. He experienced what it is to be separated from God under the judgment for sin. So the Lord, in the fullest sense, fullest sense, tasted death. He experienced death to its full. But there's other ways the New Testament uses the word tasted, such as when our Lord is hanging on the cross, and they want to give him this stupefying mixture, this wine that's been drugged with a narcotic, which was kind of a charitable mercy apparently, to people who were being crucified, to dull their senses a bit and take the edge off so that they just wouldn't have the unrelenting physical suffering. And when the Lord tasted it, you remember, the Gospels tell us, he would not drink of it. So it came to the Lord's mouth, the Lord discerned what it was, but he did not imbibe it, because the Lord was going to have no artificial mitigation of those sufferings. Nothing was going to make that work, where the Lord wasn't doing it consciously, or the Lord wasn't experiencing it and drinking that cup of the wrath of God to its dregs. So it's possible to taste and yet not to drink to its dregs, not to fully imbibe, we might say. So there are these people who've been enlightened, and they've tasted of the heavenly gift. And they've become partakers of the Holy Spirit. Now, again, you think about the Holy Spirit being the birthright of the believer. Every believer is born again of the Spirit. And the Spirit indwells that believer. Romans 8:9 tells us, if any man have not the Spirit of God, he is none of his. So it's a package deal. Our Comforter in heaven, the Lord Jesus Christ, is the one who sent the Comforter, the Holy Spirit, to be with us. He said, I'll not leave you orphans, I'll come and make my dwelling place in you. My Father and I will come and make our dwelling place in you. He does that by his Spirit. So we have the indwelling Spirit. Does not say here that these people are indwelt by the Spirit, nor that they are sealed to the Spirit. It says that they are partakers of the Spirit. They have, in some sense, shared in the benefit of the Holy Spirit. Now, we remember that the Holy Spirit is the one who produced signs and wonders and diverse works of power that we spoke about yesterday in chapter two. And that when the gospel came in those early days of the church, it was authenticated by miracles. And you remember, there were people that could come, for example, even in the Gospels, and they could benefit from the work of the Holy Spirit. They could eat of the loaves that were miraculously multiplied. Or if they were a leper, they could be cleansed. Do you remember there were ten lepers cleansed? But only one returned to give thanks to God. And I'm not saying that that automatically means the other nine weren't saved. But it is possible that physical healing was not concomitant with spiritual healing. In other words, just because the Lord healed you when you were a leper or a lame person or whatever, doesn't mean you were automatically born again. It ought to lead to you being born again, or maybe you were born again even before you were healed. Seems like that was the order of the lame man in Mark two. First he's told, son, thy sins are forgiven thee, and then he's told, rise up and walk. But it is possible that you can see the work that the Holy Spirit does, and even share in the benefit of that. How many families have been altered by a drunkard father or mother, or a drug addict father or mother, and they come to Christ and they're saved, and now the home's a different place? And the home isn't a place of fear, there's joy in the home. And there's safety in the home. And indirectly, you partake of the benefits of the Holy Spirit there. And have tasted the good word of God and the powers of the age to come. Well, when I think of all these descriptions, the person that comes to mind most is Judas Iscariot. It's been said of Judas that the same person, I'll quote a junker's brother, he was quoting a Puritan, but I heard Mike Myers say years ago in a message, that the same sun that melts ice can also harden clay. And the Bible tells us this, that we have to be careful with the light that we're given. That we have to walk in the light while we have the light. You've got to take advantage of that light, because the light can shine on you. And yet, if you're not going to receive it in the full sense of faith in the Lord Jesus Christ, saving faith, that light becomes something which hardens you. So Judas Iscariot, did he, was he enlightened? Well, Judas Iscariot knew precisely who Jesus of Nazareth was. He said, after all, in Matthew twenty seven, sorry, Matthew twenty seven, I have sinned in that I have betrayed innocent blood. And Judas Iscariot participated in the powers, sorry, tasted of the heavenly gift. I mean, did he know what it was like to be involved in Christian activity? And see the fellowship all around him? And be with the Lord who protected them and cared for them? And made sure that they had all their needs met? And hear the Lord talk to his Father? And see the Lord change people's lives? Absolutely did. And partakers of the Holy Spirit, Judas was among the two by two that the Lord sent out to preach the kingdom, but also to do miracles. So to go out and actually do supernatural works of power in the name of the Lord. And have tasted of the good word of God and the powers of the age to come. And yet Judas fell away. Because as the Lord Jesus said, ye are clean to the disciples, but not all of you. Because John explains he knew which one would betray him. And he said earlier in John six, have not I chosen you twelve, and yet one of you is a devil? Or a demon, we could translate it. And of course, later, in the upper room again, the Lord would say that the, that Judas was the son of perdition. Now, when you call someone a son of something in the Bible, it means this is your characteristic. So James and John are boanergies, sons of thunder. They can erupt, you know, like thunder. Thunder chased the staff girls out of the pool yesterday, much to my children's chagrin. And they can just explode all of a sudden. That's their character. That's what they're like. Well, he, what his character is like is lostness. The other person in the New Testament called the son of perdition is the man of sin in 2 Thessalonians two. Obviously not a believer. And obviously also associated with an apostasy, a falling away. And here it says, it's impossible, if they fall away, to renew them again to repentance, since they crucify again for themselves the Son of God and put him to an open shame. Now, I think those last phrases really clarify it. This is not a believer that's fallen into sin. This is not somebody that's gotten cold of heart and is backsliding. This is someone who, as these Hebrews in context, were turning back to Judaism. And again, he's about to say, beloved, we are confident of better things concerning you. So I'm not saying this about all of you. I'm not even saying this about the majority or most of you. I don't think this is true of you. But there might be somebody, this is true. If you were to turn back to Judaism, what were you saying? Well, the official position of Judaism today still, whether it's reformed, conservative, orthodox, ultra-orthodox, Hasidic, you name it, is that Jesus was not the Messiah. That Jesus is not the Son of God. That Jesus died on the cross, and it was either an accident of history, if they want to be very ecumenical and nice, or it was the right thing, because Jesus really was a blasphemer. And the Talmud, in the few places where it mentions Jesus, says that the works of power that he did, it doesn't deny he did works of power, but it says he did it by sorcery, which was the same thing the Pharisees said about the Lord in the Gospels. Mark three, for example. And they repudiate Christ. And they say essentially, the cross was the right move. That's exactly what should happen to Jesus, because he was false. Now, can a real believer ever say that? Well, by definition, you're not believing when you say that. You're not believing that he's the Son of God. What do you? I mean, you could believe he's a historic man, but atheists believe that. You know, you're not in any sense a believer if you're crucifying him afresh. Not just putting him to death, but crucifixion is a value judgment. This man's under the curse of God. And that's how we esteem him. He's nothing to me. As Brother Henry read to us from chapter 10 the other day, you're trampling his blood, you're stepping on Christ, and you're esteeming that blood as vulgar, not sacred, not holy. You're saying it's a common thing. It's just a bit of chemical matter. It has no spiritual value, because there's no value in this man's life whatsoever. And that's what they would say if they would turn back to Judaism. They would be putting the Lord Jesus to an open shame, and they would be siding with his enemies. And he uses that natural parable of the earth drinking in the rain. So you know, our God, a brother prayed it this morning. He causes the sun to shine on the evil and the good, and makes it to rain on the just and the unjust in Matthew five. Our God by his providence gives man blessings. And it's possible that God gives man spiritual blessings, light that leads him to salvation. Do you not know that the goodness of God leads you to repentance, Romans two four? But if it doesn't take it in, if it bears thorns and briars, it's rejected and is near to being cursed. Even in phrasing it that way, I think there's a little hint. Hey, if you're not there yet, there's still time to repent and believe in the Lord Jesus. If you're still on the fence, there's still time to trust in the Lord. But beware, because if you turn away from the Lord, there's no Plan B salvation. If you side with his enemies that crucified him, it's impossible to renew you to repentance, not because God's unwilling to save you, but because there's nothing more he can give you than what he's already given. And if you won't receive that, you won't be saved. You remember what the rich man who found himself in Hades in Luke 16 said? Send somebody to my brothers, that they do not come to this place. And the Lord said, well, they have Moses and the prophets. No, send somebody from here. And the Lord said, Abraham, the Lord speaking through his servant Abraham there, says to the man, even if one rise from the dead, they won't believe if they don't receive Moses and the prophets. And that's a principle. That if they don't believe God's word, even if he sends a saint back from heaven to tell people the gospel, they still won't believe. Because all that is needed to be born again is right here in the word of God. And if you won't have that revelation, God could keep giving you more and more light, and it'll never be enough. You'll never be convinced, you'll never believe. Not because the problem's with God, but because the problem is with us, with our adamant unbelieving heart.